Good evening and welcome to the regular town board meeting for the town of Tustin for June twenty-two. Call the meeting at order, please join me in the pledge.
I got through one point one and one point two very well.
Thank you. We're gonna try. Our Tustin Youth Commission and the Narrowsburg Chamber of Commerce are hosting your fourth operation following the Narrowsburg Fireman's Parade in town. The parade begins at three P M. and the celebration will be on Demora Lane from three to eight P M. And there's all sorts of things they've got, including live music, portable rides, activities, local vendors, food and drink.
But go to the parade first.
And get chicken.
Yeah, and get your chicken barbecue after.
Our payment of bills generally expended sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and thirteen cents, highway expended seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-two cents, water sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and forty-five cents, sewer twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and two cents, lighting district seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-three cents, for a total of one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Bruce and Kevin audited the bills. Any questions, recommendations? A motion to pay the bills presented.
Why make a motion to pay the bills?
Second from Bruce, second from Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our highway, water, sewer and building department reports are online. We will jump now to the upper Delaware Council. Hello, Sue, come on up.
Would you just like a little break down?
Okay. Tonight, from what I understand, the zoning. Thank you. Okay, can everybody hear me now? All right, so on the agenda tonight is the zoning amendment, local law, right? Will come up?
Yes. Microphone down a little bit soon.
Okay, great. So at any rate, it's, it's, that's the story. Before that, Ten Mile River Access, the Park Service is negotiating with the conservation group who now own the Boy Scout land, and when they come to an agreement, they will reopen the kiosk and serve that place where people put in and out of the river. Right now, they are probably not there, but I haven't been there personally, so I don't know. So the zoning amendments, the review was conducted by Carrie Engelhardt, who is our land use person at U D C. And she presented that at May's project review. That's the committee that always reviews that stuff. And Pete Manning and Ben were there, part of that meeting. Park Service is always part of that meeting. And there were some issues to be resolved, which I understand have been resolved, talking to Carrie today, resulting in a revised document, which will be reviewed at tonight's meeting with a public hearing to be scheduled in July. And the final version, and then the process is the final version, what you come up with after that public hearing, will be in very likelihood approved by U D C because all the issues we had have been addressed in it. And then it goes to the Park Service. As far as I know, all the issues they may have will be have had been addressed, okay? And therefore, right along into completion in time to collect tag grant money.
I think so.
No, am I, am I wrong here?
Sorry, I'm just.
Well, that particular one that we're doing now, those are from the former, not from this grant cycle.
Oh, you would know that better than I.
Yeah, we're working on.
You're in the former cycle with the zoning.
The former cycle.
Yeah.
At the. This twenty, yeah, but this is.
Don't, one at the bottom is, is next year coming. So, so basically, that's the pathway to getting this all done and in process. And I don't want to take up too much time because you have a lot to do, but the issue that was the real sticking point was communication towers. And, and I could be wrong, I put scenic district, I think it was recreational district, actually.
We've taken care of that, we've addressed.
It, yes, and, but what it did was, it raised the issue that has not been visited in a long time, which needs to be visited. And, and so there's a roof management plan that was created in nineteen eighty-six, which doesn't address this at all. There's the Park Service and their means of addressing it is to say, you're not allowed, period. And this is, you know, a long, lots of time has passed, people's expectations have changed. What you have is you want to protect the scenic values of the corridor and you also want to protect public safety. So we revisit, and I suggested that we have Lauren Green, I T Director of Sullivan County, come and do a presentation to us because he is operating nine towers in Sullivan County. He plans to offer a complete cell service to all of us, like in competition with Verizon. So I would say he knows what he's doing. And we have a lot of questions. So the U D C is seeking to update ourselves as to where current technology is. It's not a question, and I don't see it as pro or anti-cell tower, it's a question of where does it go to achieve the goal? If you have dead zones all the way down through Lackawax and all the way in Chehola, all the way up and down Route ninety-seven, places with absolutely no signal, that needs to be fixed, right? So that's the process, that's where we are, we're looking for information. The Park Service is, is doing a research on all the other parks in America, what do they do? And we are looking into what we can discover. And the money, Wayne County has just received two million dollars to build and to address their broadband. Where are they going to put those towers? Are they going to compliment and give us service on our side? Is anything we do on our side going to serve their side? This is crazy, it's a seventy-three mile corridor, it needs to be addressed as that. But I don't know how that will be achieved at this point, but we're working on it. And any suggestions that anybody else has that who has that kind of expertise would be welcome. So the funding and then everything else is just stuff you've heard before, our funding issues, very helpful, all the towns joined in, supported us, we sent our letters out to Governor Hopeful, Governor Wolf, all the designated people. Tag grants, the new round, F Y twenty-two-three, is open. So that means this is looking forward into next year and what Jane might want to apply for. And Interstate Bridge Commission, they're, they're just not doing anything about the First Falls Bridge, and it's kind of sad. Sullivan Renaissance, that was interesting, it just came today, they're having a roundtable on litter tomorrow on Zoom at. So those are interesting notifications. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Do you have any ETA on when that meeting might be scheduled, Sue? Is there a, is there a vague timeframe?
When, you mean, the guy from Sullivan County would come? No, we invited him for August because we had an August opening and we haven't had a response. And it is short notice, it would have been better if we had asked him this like two, three months ago, but it depends on his schedule and his, his project to do what I just said he was going to do. It suffered from COVID, it suffered from glitches, you know, it's government. Right, but I think he does have a lot of expertise and some handle on why is it that if emergency people can talk to each other, but a person who has an emergency and an ordinary phone can't report the emergency? So this is not making sense, that's what I plan to ask him.
What date is that meeting in August?
That would be the first Thursday in August, and the presentations are always at seven o'clock. And if he is going to show up, I'd be happy to send you an email, Crystal would make sure all of you get it. I'll forward it over. Yeah, definitely. Okay.
Thank you, Sue. Brandy with the Energy Committee?
Sure, hold on. Am I muted? Am I unmuted? Yes, we can hear you. Okay, cool. Um, soft plastic, to date, we've collected over eleven tons of soft plastic waste in Tustin, and we've been rewarded with several track benches made of recycled cycoplastic in almost three years. This month, two of the benches were placed at the library at the Beth Peck Memorial Garden to honor the very woman who donated the library to the town. Beth always supported the T E C's efforts, so it's a fitting that we honor her with a memorial garden. Star, Sean and I all worked on the project. And I invite you guys all to go over there, there's a plaque there and benches and, and you can think of Beth and have, you know, read a book or whatever. Another bench, there will be a, an openings of sorts also, it's not announced yet with the library. Another bench was delivered to the basketball courts on the flats. L E D streetlights, I had a long conversation with N I P A yesterday regarding the, the completion of the streetlight installation. We are waiting five decorative pendant light fixtures for Main Street, as well as the new streetlight poles with L E D lights in the Main Street Bank parking lot, which the town now owns. The holdup is Nice Egg is saying that they need an engineer to inspect the Main Street poles before they permit new armature and tendons. I've asked N I P A to demand Nice Egg do the inspection immediately since they've known about the fixtures for at least five years. N I P A is going through, going to press them. Actually, let, this is after nine years, the T E C is working to, has been working to bring L E D streetlights to the town, and we're more than ready to have the job completed and up and running. I did talk to them today again, they talked with Nice Egg, and they were told, we're not talking to you guys, we will only talk with Tustin. So I would like to reach out to the, the contact then, if you don't mind, because I know her, but if you want to do it, it needs to be done immediately, they are not cooperating. And, well, would you prefer?
You know what, Melissa?
Yeah.
I can give her a call tomorrow.
Okay. I really, you know, it's not going to move unless you do it, because they, they're just, that's how they've acted this whole time. So, um, the horse, this month, the T E C named the plant food produced by the horse, the liquid will be called Second Helpings at Plant Food Solution. And thanks to Kevin for the perfect product name, we're currently test marketing the solution on trees, bushes, flowers and vegetables. The T E C applied second helpings to half of the forsythia in front of the town solar array in October, and the growth is amazing on the treated plants. Then in May, I treated the other half with second helping, helped catch them up to the taller bushes. The ten that we treated in October are double the size of the ones that were not treated. So I'm documenting all this with the images, and so we know how it grows and how fast. So I'm trying to catch up the other pet half, so it doesn't look so ridiculous. So, um, let's see. We're documenting the effects of the power. We also await organic certification for the product, it's being tested, and it's, it's a, you know, a long process, but we're almost there and it's looking good. Several notable people in government, international sustainability experts, schools, scholars and a local four H club will all be making a trip to the Tustin horses summer to learn about food waste solutions and how to produce plant food from scrap, food scraps. Rochester Institute of Technology is performing an ongoing case study of our horse and Climate Smart Communities Grant. I emailed Greg and Crystal with Tustin's energy savings data collected over several years to be posted on the town website. Today it was posted. I'm still waiting for our consultant Nicholas to approve what was posted, so as soon as I know, I'll let you know, Crystal, because he didn't get back to me today. I mean, so far, it looks good. But again, I want him to, he's the one who's going to apply for this grant, and it needs to be up to his standards for, for N I S E R T A. The effort will allow the T E C to apply for ten thousand dollar grant, Climate Smart Communities Grant, the link on the website, blah, blah, blah. So that's all up there, and thanks for getting that up there. Miscellaneous, the T E C continues to urgently advocate for new outdoor trash and recycling receptacles on the deck, Veterans Park, the flats and its town hall, and as well as public portable bathrooms, especially during the busy tour season. I see that it's on your agenda, that's great. And Ben, I don't know if you want to discuss what you had, we have discussed in, in text, but you have a consultant you'd like us to talk to?
Yeah, I know, we'll wait until we've got more information on that for the board.
All right, just wanted, I just wanted, I just want to kind of just say this, that, you know, we're Climate Smart Community, we took a pledge, like, that's a legal thing, and we have to use sustainable energy, we can't go with any kind of natural gas. And I looked at the website and it's featuring a lot of natural gas, we can't go that route. It's, unless you guys want to opt out of being a Climate Smart Community, I doubt you'd want to do that.
Randy, let's not, let's not jump to a conclusion that we don't know yet, we haven't even sat down and talked with the gentleman, and we don't have natural gas here for hookups. So my conversation.
It's not about getting a hookup, it's about purchasing them as our provider, we have a solar array, so anyway, just.
Yeah, let's, let's wait till we have the conversation before we worry about thinking that, oh my God, we're doing something terrible. If it, if we have a conversation and the conversation doesn't go the way the town and the, the T E C likes, then the conversation gets dropped. But in the meantime, let's wait and see what he can present to us.
I, I definitely am not saying, oh my God, this is something terrible, I just looked at the website you gave me, and I just, that's what I saw, so just wanted you to know, for the last eleven years, the town has been set up with an ESCO with Nice, Nice Egg, and we have a solar array providing our energy for municipality buildings and facilities.
Let's see if this company can do anything for us, or they can't do anything for us, it's, nothing is set in stone, so let's move forward with it.
I have a question for Brandy.
Absolutely.
Brandy, is Kirk Road next in line for benches?
One bench, I don't see how in the world that's not going to get stolen, I don't, I don't know, it's, it seems like a really strange place to put a bench, but I couldn't give you more, that's a year's worth of bench if I gave you two benches. You know? Of one, and one is sufficient, Jane?
No, but if that's all we can get, that's all we can get. We expected that people would use it as they, just as a rest place when they walk up Kirk Road.
I just don't want, the bench is walking away, that's the only.
Well, they won't walk away, just like they haven't walked, well, whatever.
We can, we can anchor it with some concrete as well, so that it's, so that it's secured.
Okay.
Any other questions for Randy? Thank you, Brandy. Zoning update?
Okay, we meet every two weeks, we're getting closer and closer, the, oh, we meet every two weeks, we're getting closer and closer, the grant is ending at the end of August, and we anticipate that we will have the work done that's necessary to satisfy the grant application and the work that we said to do. Anything you want to add, Peter?
Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think you pretty much covered it, and one of the bigger parts beyond what we're doing is the codification online through the general code publishers to get the three or four local laws that we adopted in two thousand seventeen folded into the two thousand and twelve zoning, everything's online, it's just separate, and then, once we get that, we'll be able to more easily integrate all the changes we're working on during this project. And other than that, thanks to the committee for all their dedication with this.
Um, Peter, I was going to cover that subject under the grant, I did speak with Lori, so I don't know how, how long you're staying. Oh, grants is next, so.
Right into it.
I'll go right into it, all right, first, the grants report, U D C grant is up to date, it needs every two weeks, Little Lake area is getting ready to be rebid in July or August. Shoemaker Engineering has been responding once a month to the D O T. Water Infrastructure Project, we met with Delaware Engineering to begin implementation steps of the three million dollar award, and Delaware Engineering phoned the other day to, phoned me to say that, yes, there is more money available by the federal government, and they have applied on our behalf for more money, so that's wonderful. We sent in the request to the William Pomeroy Foundation for the historical marker for the lava schoolhouse, which is on Route fifty-two. Interestingly enough, just a quick little history lesson, it was a schoolhouse, it was a World War Two Observation Center, and it was the meeting place for the Narrowsburg Fire Department, oh, lava fire department. So because of that, it, it, it can have a marker, it's not just a schoolhouse. The Plans in Progress Grant from the county for the architectural consultation for the town rearrangement space was denied. But you do have something on here about the next grant cycle.
I do.
All right. I guess I'll wait. I'll wait. That's it.
Jane, the, the additional money that Delaware is going to look into, that will impact what we already have, that, if they don't.
No, 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 we can get it in, in additional.
It's additional, it doesn't, they don't take away from the first.
Right.
Uh, Parking Committee, anything to report?
We've been meeting, still come up with the same thought, signage and.
Waiting on the sign.
Waiting on the sign, come from the county, so we can get signs up.
I spoke with the county yesterday, so I don't know if that's going to make them move any faster, but.
They have it before too long, so that way.
Which sign is that?
The universal parking signs for here and down there.
Two.
And also, our next meeting is going to be in the parking lot, so, so we can move things over and check things out.
What is that date?
It's the last.
It's right before the planning board meeting, what is that, the fourth Tuesday?
Oh.
I want to make the.
No. Oh, yeah.
Twenty-eight.
You can have it down there, there's early zoning, early opening here on the twenty.
Oh, well, then we will go meet in the parking lot.
They will definitely meet in the parking lot.
Right, you're right.
You'll need to change that on the meetings.
Just to be fair, I think Brendan wanted us to say that he wanted to recommend that the board consider a, a study.
So I do have that on there for, yeah, okay, discussion.
That came out of.
Yes.
Any questions for Parking Committee? I will open the floor to public comment, I'll start with the floor, and then we will go to Zoom for ten minutes.
Ted? Okay, so I'm on the parking lot committee, and we're making progress. So I had an old schema overview from Les Elling of the parking lot committee, so I went up there, and I kind of laid it out, and we have like sixty-four parking spaces there in the, in the parking lot. And I talked to Don Niger, I said it would be pretty easy if we just, you know, cut in half, laid it out, you don't have to pave or anything, we don't need to, to widen the access or egress area, those parking spaces should be just parallel to the post office. And so you have sixty-four spaces up there that really have been sitting there for, forever, now that the town bought the property, so now we can do whatever we pleased with it. So I would, I would, I would kind of insist that the town, I would, put that together, we're in the middle of the summer, summer season, we got the River Fest and all kinds of other things coming up, all you have to do is put some six by sixes in, in the middle, and, and just, just paint them, paint the lines on the, on the crusher, okay? So you have that issue solved, and I, and we talked about it, and I said, you know, there's no reason, the only person on this, on the parking lot committee that wants to have a, a study is beside it. And so if you look at that, which I do, and I've been in a lot of litigation, well, why wouldn't you? You would want that if you're litigating against the town to hold up other businesses in this town, to have a study so that the more that, listen, the more you analyze, you paralyze. And so you analyze to paralyze, so then, in, in legal terms, then you litigate to confiscate, because it's a long process. So now we have a businessman in this town, and if I wanted to expand my, my, let's say my debt, and I needed more parking spaces, I can't just make more parking spaces, I would be facing the same thing that the Ford Garage people are facing right now. So, you know, the zoning that we have needs to be changed, you should not have zoning that the planning board can arbitrarily give a pass on one, on one project and a pass not on the other project, for whatever reason, be it personal, be it political, whatever else. I sue the town because of that, because the exact same thing happened to me with the sign issue. And the town spent a lot of money paying me and my attorneys because they were wrong. And so it's, 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 it's wrong, you need to have one law fits all, the town, the town, the downtown business area, we can't produce more property, we have what we have. And if we want to operate our business, then, then we should not be subject to a parking issue because it's a town problem, it's not an individual problem, okay? And these properties are, are what they are, simple as that. So we, we, we need to change the zoning so that one size fits all for the downtown businesses, we should not be subject to any type of parking restriction, unless, let's say, unless you're doing a major modification to a building, you're putting two stories, three stories on, and you only have one story. But downstairs, but downtown businesses should not have that issue, and in a proposed zoning, you have the planning board that can make the decision whether one person gets a pass on parking and the other person doesn't. We need to get rid of that, we have all kind of parking, listen, when I was a kid, Don Niger and I talked about it at the Parking Committee, there was, we had the school, we had dances, we had graduations, we had all kind of facilities, all kind of stuff going on, we never once had, had a parking issue, and we didn't have the library parking that we have now. So let's try to stop the litigation in this town, make the zone so one size fits all, that's not a parking issue for downtown businesses, unless they're doing a major, major expansion on the business, and then you can restrict it, but not, not that it's subject to the planning board, and, and do not, the only person on the planning, excuse me, the Parking Lot Committee that wanted the study was Mr. White, and of course he does, his attorneys would love that, because while the study's going on, he'll tell the judge, listen, let's not do anything, just hold this in abeyance until we find out about the study, and the study could take forever. So don't do that because the town's going to end up with more litigation. So I'm, I'm, I'm telling you, this is the way we should proceed, the Parking Lot Committee can, you know, we're on it, Bruce is doing a great job, Don Niger's on it, we have plenty of parking, we don't have an issue, we have all kind of pictures from Memorial Day, we're going to have July fourth, there's not a parking issue in this town, so let's not make a mountain out of a molehill, get rid of this litigation, change the zoning where it's comfortable and it's, and it, and one size fits all, do not restrict downtown businesses from parking issues because it invites litigation, and I would litigate if, if you did that to me, okay? I appreciate your time.
Hi, I'm Brendan Blyden, my wife and I own the Narrowsburg Union. Ted, thank you for that introduction. Ed just, Ted just spoke a lot about litigation, not involved in any litigation, I think other people may be involved in litigation.
Yeah. We know we discussed to the board.
Yeah. We're not involved in, in suing the town, we've not done that, we've asked questions of the town, we've asked them to look into certain things. But let's, let's start with the beginning, we have a zoning law, we have, the zoning law requires parking. Now, until it's changed, if it ever changes, the zoning law should be adhered to, and the town needs to enforce their zoning law as it pertains to parking. So we've asked that the town conduct a study, this is not a one dimensional thing, this is not a one time thing that a business is overdensifying their building, this may happen in the future, and the town needs to do this with their eyes open, look at the opportunities, look at the need to control parking, so it's not crazy and wild, and do it in an orderly way. A study shouldn't take long, right, hire a professional firm, do a study, let's do it right, this is not just for a one time, one occupant who's overdensifying, this is for the town for the long term, that's what we're looking to do. So, thank you very much, we hope you do the study, I think it'd be the right thing for the town, it would be a shame if the town misses this opportunity to take this point in time. to take this point in time to look at the parking needs and what they could be as the town continues to develop. Thanks.
Let me go, Neil, and then I'll go to the back and then I'll forward.
Well, folks, I'm Neil Lakowski. I'm the ZBHA Chair for the town. Back in March, I made a proposal to the board concerning changing the the application fee rate and compensation for the clerk and also the board members. And I was curious as to why why now in June, we we still have no progress made on that.
Gentlemen, speaking to the microphone, I can't hear what you're saying.
I think I am.
Just a little, Neil, just as I said, yeah. Okay, we've got it on tonight, Neil. We had a board discussion on it where we had just set the fees and we didn't, we didn't feel it was the time to raise them up because we just started. You'll see it's on the agenda tonight for the board and with the things that we've seen as far as gas prices and the number of meetings and stuff, I think you'll be happy with the outcome.
All right, because it's something that's been long overdue. You know, when I was previously chair, it was something I I wanted to address. But it never came to the forefront. And since I came back on board now, I made it a priority to to address this, you know, you know, poor Amy has been stuck in a groove for a long, long time, even since we were on the board.
Yeah, I mentioned that the event I left in 2012.
She needs some kind of adjustment there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't.
My question is to Mr. White, and if we do a study, what do you think the outcome will be, the study?
Unfortunately, Joan, it's got to be to the board. Your your question's answered.
So if the study is done, I am, the study might come, might say we need more parking. That's all I can say. And then what are we going to do? So the what would be the conclusion? What would be the whole, I believe that's what he wants, why we want to do a survey. So we can say we need more parking and we don't, and it's going to stifle business, which is what what is happening right now. Perfect solution. He has a parking lot full of spots. Why doesn't the town pay him rent or yearly fee? You can make, he can make money on it or charge a fee, a daily rate, like a public parking area, and he'll make money. And everyone will have plenty of spots. Problem solved. He has a, I mean, I understand when he, when he bought the union. I think there was a lot of hoops he had to go through to get that the way the town wanted to. So I think it may be sour grapes or he's just wants everyone else to go through the hoops that he went through. Fine, let's make, let's come to an agreement. Let's stop this bullying of every town of of new businesses trying to open up and encourage business instead of trying to tell people you can't open because this this has to be done. I think we have a solution. That could be an easy solution if he would just let allow us to the town to pay for the pay for parking there or and pay for a daily rate. Make some money on it.
Brian.
One quick request for Jane, the zoning update. I'm really interested where that goes. I don't know the process, the next steps, when we see the next revision and when that goes back up to the board. So if if I can get that information at some point, you don't have to read it out now.
It's actually going to come tonight. We're going to have a reintroduction of the amendments. We're going to set a public hearing. It'll be in July for it and Peter Manning will be here also while we do that.
Okay, just a couple of quick comments. And on this whole conversations going on, I think there's like a bunch of different issues. But I think for me, like in my perspective, are separate, right? What how how we enforce zoning in town that exists and when the zoning is revised is one piece. We definitely need to think about that and make sure we're doing that right. And everybody's comfortable with that. The parking situation, you know, I I'll echo what I think Carl said at a previous meeting. I certainly have never encountered a parking problem. Even when we close off the street for events, we all, everyone seems to find parking around here. However, it sounds like there's more spots to be created in what we have. There's better signage and the rules are enforced as they stand right now. I know. I often drive through town in the winter and go, wow, we had like no parking for plowing, but we, you know, never seem to enforce the rules that we have. And I know there's other places where people park illegally and it's kind of commonly accepted. So like, there's a lot of cleanup in our house before we start worrying about like a wholesale transformation of how we think about parking in town. And then as a taxpayer in town, like the idea, it sounds like there's one person here that wants the entire town to fund something. And I'm like, you know, things are tight. Get tighter for everyone around here. I'm not a fan of spending money on something that just one person has decided that they want the entire town to fund. Thank you.
Well, I'm really disturbed to hear people making accusations that this is all just a personal vendetta of one man who wants to get revenge because he or she had to have getting parking places. Parking has been a chronic problem. And I don't think it's anyway going to be solved by just saying the town can do what it wants. The town can't do what it wants. Whether they own the parking lot or not, there are rules and regulations and there are zoning rules that have to be followed. So if those rules are just blurred and like the illegal parking along Bridge Street down here that forever has gone on. And I believe at one point the town code enforcement officer said something about, well, if we if we enforce the rules that are there, that'll shut down half the businesses on Main Street. Well, that may certainly happen, but it doesn't mean that that's isn't an illegal situation that's being winked at. So that some people will have the areas that they want in front of their buildings to be occupied by parking and clients. To put up a sign down by the Main Street parking lot, I don't think that people don't know it's there. That that lot, when there's a lot of people in town, that that lot is packed. So putting up a sign saying, oh, whoopee, here we got parking, that doesn't make more slots. It just makes a sign that somebody has to look at. I'd also like to ask, and this will be probably discussed on about the follow up on the bathrooms on and the public bathrooms on Main Street. And I'd also like to ask for the first 25, 30 minutes of the meeting. All you saw on that screen was the agenda or whatever it is that was being followed. None of the reporters were showing up there. So you just, you couldn't see who said what to whom. That is there so that everyone can participate as if they're in the room. In this case, even being in the room, you couldn't see who was talking. So I would like that at some point in the future, please put that screen back up so that the Zoom qualities are are able to be seen by everyone. And I would like to thank Mr. White for the very many hours of research and study that he's put into this whole parking problem. Just saying we don't have to deal with it is not going to make it go away. Thank you.
I'm going to close a public comment. I know I've got more people that want it. There'll be more public comment coming. Probably after new business. Well, we've got a lot on the agenda. And I apologize for that, but we're twice the limit into it.
It's also worth noting that there'll probably be a public hearing on the zoning.
Yes, there will be a public hearing set for a lot of the questions that have been asked tonight.
That's July.
July 5th.
Right. So a lot of this conversation really should take place at that.
4.1 Parking Lot Bridge Street Wall Repair. We have spoken with the Highway Superintendent. We are looking to get some concrete people in to repair the wall that is behind the, that would be the Beth Peck or the Art Peck Garden. Does the board want me to work with the superintendent and try to get some contractors to see if we can get them to come in and actually take a look at that since we've had no response from any of the Masons?
Yep, sorry.
Yes, I also, I took the liberty, I I'm on the library board too, of informing Audra about that. I'm sure she could be tied, you know, in the loop.
Maybe they've got some suggestions or things that can come forward. We'll work on that and see where we need to to bring it to. 4.2 is authorize the supervisor to sign the contract with Certified Appraisal Services out of Middletown, New York for the purposes of getting professional appraisal on property on Main Street to bank property.
I move that we authorize you to sign that contract.
I second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I oppose.
You can unmute Peter. Okay, thank you. 4.3 is our reintroduction of our local law number one of 2022 and also to set the public hearing for July 5th at 6:30. Peter, on that, the one question is, we're sending this back to the county. The UDC has it. It is a type one action. Do you feel that there's any significant changes to affect our secret decision on this? Do we need to redo that?
I I don't. We should check with legal counsel. I will say that the significant change to adjust the camping, actually, the creation of a new use is a lower impact use. So you're going in the direction of more environmental protection with regard to the main change in the local law. So no, I don't feel that way. But again, double checking with legal counsel is the way to go.
Okay.
A summary of the substantive adjustments to the local law was the removal of the communications towers from the recreational river, the scenic river. As was noted in the UDC report. The creation of a new use, a scenic campground and related requirements and the removal of the campground or recreational vehicle park is a special use in the scenic recreational district. The path forward at this point is to adopt the local laws discussed and sketched in the zoning rewrite committee meeting on June 7th review and finalize and post the redlined revised local law, which we will do tonight and to set the public hearing and make any final adjustments to the local law after the public hearing in July. Anything to add to that, Peter?
Yes, the, just to summarize, the comments came primarily from three sources. The Upper Delaware Council, which we heard about, and and you just recovered the public at the public hearing as well as emails and letters. And there were some similarities among the comments between the council and the public with regard to the the camping in the scenic river. And that was addressed, as you mentioned. And then the third category is the County Planning Department who made some suggestive advisory comments on the parking sections. And we incorporated those suggestions into the local law, which again you will see in red when it's posted.
So the zoning update committing not rewrite.
Is that what I said? I just want to see if they're paying attention. Okay, 4.3, they're reintroduce a local law number one of 2022. Be resolved, the amended introductory law number one of the year 2022 entitled a law, local law, amending the zoning law and the subdivision law of the town of Tustin, Sullivan County, New York. Is hereby introduced before the town board of the town of Tustin, County of Sullivan, State of New York. Be further resolved, the copies of the aforementioned said local law have been laid upon the desk of each member of the town board. And be a further resolved, the town board hereby determines the aforementioned local law to be a type one action pursuant to the regulations regulated under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, for which a full environmental assessment form shall be completed. And be it further resolved, the town board hereby designates itself as the lead agency for purposes of the environmental review of the aforementioned local law pursuant to the regulations regulated into the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Be a further resolved, the town board hold a public hearing on the aforementioned local law at the Town of Tustin Community Hall, 210 Bridge Street, Narrowsburg, New York at 6:30 PM prevailing time on July the 5th, 2022. Be a further resolved, that the town clerk publish or cause to be published a public notice in every quarter of such public hearing at least five days prior there too. The question of the adoption of the foregoing resolution is duly put to a vote on a roll call results as follows. Kevin?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
And I am an eye.
I made the motion. Need a motion in a second.
I move that we.
I moved that she seconded it and they. Yes.
All right.
Thank you. 4.4 is to authorize consultant Peter Manning to draft the local law for the Conservation Advisory Council. Discussion on that.
No, it's very necessary. So I think.
I spoke to Peter. He's got a duff, but probably by July meeting, Peter, we'd be able to.
I'm almost done with the draft at this time. And it's, you know, like so many statutes, there's a lot of flexibility afforded. So it'll be good to have a dialogue about the draft and and that'll be forthcoming probably this week.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would make motion for him to do that for us.
I'll second it.
All in favor? I oppose. Is there anything else under old business that we've missed? Okay. Into new business. A motion to approve a $20 per load surcharge for fuel for decalming construction.
I move that we pay a surcharge to decalmate construction of $20 per load.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I oppose.
5.2 to amend the superintendent, the interim superintendent of water and sewers contract to read from the hourly rate of $40 per hour for the first 12 hours of work in a given work week and $75 an hour for any work related to qualms or emergencies that are performed beyond the 12 hours. To read for the first four hours of a work day. Be paid at the rate of $40 per hour and then $75 per hour for any work related to that after the first four hours, including qualms or emergencies that are performed after the four hours.
Okay.
Discussion on that at all before we, that will be my motion. A second.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
What kind of impact will that have on the city?
It hasn't had any. This came out as a kind of like a self audit within the town. It just, it, they came up and it looked at.
Is retroactive late to January 1st or is this Monday?
From this day forward.
And it basically just changes it to reflect what has been.
Right, so that if he's got a 12 hour workday, it doesn't relieve him from the rest of the week coming in and doing things.
Right. Okay.
All in favor?
I oppose.
5.3, a request for road closure, June 17th for the Deepwater Film Festival.
Literature, literary festivals.
And I believe that was, I had times in there.
I believe it was 5 o'clock that it was starting to shut.
8:30, yep. And that would be from the post office to Bridge Street and leaving the parking lot open.
I'll make that move.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
I oppose.
5.4, I don't know if it's going to be muted or not. DVAA was requesting for the banner installation that they've got.
Yeah, I saw that.
Up. I've also got another one to go with them. I think we can authorize them to put their banner where they want it on the the sidewall and.
Right. Okay, so I move that DVAA can install a banner on the side of 210 Bridge Street. And we're doing it all in one motion to extend there.
We'll do a separate motion each one. I think we need the the other motion. I will second that motion. All in favor?
I.
I oppose. The DVAA does need to go to a 10 year lease. The, they were currently at a six year lease. The Arch Council of New York, I did get a letter from Ariel today requesting that. And it would also be renewable each year. It does not hold us to anything that you past leases haven't done.
Okay, I move that we approve an extension of DVAA lease from six year to a 10 year. Okay, I move that, uh, we approve, uh, an extension of DVAA lease from six year to a ten year lease.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. Um, request for. Road closure for the July twenty fourth River Fest.
I move that we approve road closure. Main Street closure on July twenty fourth for River Fest for the hours, uh. I think six thirty A M until about.
Back from the post office.
Post office to Bridge Street, leaving the post office open.
Mm hmm.
Uh, second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Uh, authorize a supervisor to sign a memorandum under of agreement for the unions for the purpose of the Juneteenth holiday. This would also apply to our non-union. Employees.
It's the highway and the water.
And sewer and then it'd be regular employees too. They usually follow the same.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Uh. Five point. Eight. Authorize a supervisor to contract with Ryan Kelly from Chris Kelly Office Supplies. Um, he is at a hundred and twenty dollars per hour. And we are able to purchase hours in advance to get a discount, so. Uh, similar to, we know that we've got some I T with Frontier coming in. We know how many hours it's going to be, we can upfront our hours with them.
We're gonna offer to contract him as an I T. I take manager, uh, consultant. Okay, I just wanted to know what.
Yeah.
Doesn't say that we're still in your.
Right, so authorize a supervisor sign. Uh, contract for an I T consultant with Ryan Kelly from Chris Kelly Office Supplies.
Look, were we paying?
Um, less, I think we're, depending on what was going on, leave the eighty dollar range an hour.
Uh, yeah, it was seventy five to eighty typically. Um, but with this, if depending on the blocks that we purchased, which will help with budgeting, um, we can go down, get it down to like a hundred dollars an hour. Um. But that's if you purchase like ten hours at a time. Um, the hours that we purchased do not expire at the end of the year. So they can roll over. So if the, you know, um, budget, uh, each. Certain departments are going to use five hours, certain, they're going to use ten hours and buy a certain amount. Then, um, we'll only be going up twenty five dollars an hour for I T.
So can you amend that to say that we authorized the supervisor to contract with, uh, Ryan Kelly for technical assistance at the. Rate, at a discounted rate when buying, um.
At a rate of a hundred and twenty dollars per hour and then lesser late rate when. Bought in bulk, when hours are bought in bulk.
Yeah.
That good?
Yeah, but I urge the town to buy in bulk.
Well, we should.
Yeah, that's, that's our, that's our plan.
Okay.
There's absolutely no reason why we would.
And can I just ask, when was the last time Jeff's fee had been renegotiated?
I want to see it's been more than ten years.
Yeah.
Been a long time.
Just to give context to.
Most I T departments that we utilize are well over.
Yeah.
Like this is a reasonable, uh, cost.
I have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Five point nine authorize a highway superintendent to auction surplus equipment, which includes four six hundred gallon tanks, one leaf vacuum, one welder, one utility truck body. And one two thousand and six international truck.
Wow.
You have a motion?
Yes, please.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Oppose. Uh, five point ten authorize an air support department to host annual parade and close the streets for July the fourth, which would include. Bridge Erie and Maine.
Mm hmm. I, I make that motion.
A second? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Uh, do we want to have a discussion regarding our meeting camera and microphone again?
I, I'd like to see it. Like we discussed, the U D C meetings weren't, uh, so.
Okay, I think that's, we'll get you in the office, we'll take a look at it. Um, the price is low enough. Jane doesn't like it, but we can. You advise our.
I just think it's more and more takes place. In Zoom land.
Uh, five point.
Can I, just one other thing about that? Uh, start to the point that you made, the, the camera that we are looking at would take care of some of the concerns you mentioned about today's meeting. It's an active feed that goes to the speaker, so. Um, I think you'd be happy with the progress, so that, that's the point of. That discussion.
Five point one two authorize the deputy supervisor to apply for the U D C tag grants. For the fiscal year twenty two, twenty three.
That'd be for the, um. What we'll do is take the three separate zoning laws that we have. And integrate them into one and put them on the website. Um, I spoke with Lori and it's okay to do that.
Okay. I'll make that note. A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion further? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. Uh, five point one three is authorize a supervisor to obtain an R F P for a parking study. I will put that in the form of a motion. Do I have a second? Bruce, did I hear you second that for me?
No.
Somebody second it for me, please.
Well, if you second it, we can discuss it a little bit.
That is correct.
Okay, I'll second it.
Thank you. Uh, discussion.
Yeah, I don't understand what it's supposed to do.
I think the idea was to have a parking study to determine. Uh. What? Our parking situation here is within the Hamlet of Narrowsburg. Um. I attended the last meeting of the parking committee. Um. I did not see much support for it. Um, we've also discussed the fact, um, and it's brought to us by council about the parking study that was had up in Calicoon. Um. Where they get a, a lot more traffic and a lot more. Business unfortunately than I think we do here, but they are a little larger. And they found that they don't have a parking problem, they have a parking utilization. Um.
Well, I think that we have to expand what we have and then we'll have a lot more parking.
I think we've, I think what was brought up by the parking committee. They took the low hanging fruit and said, let's put the signs up. Okay.
And paint.
They held one meeting. They've got something for us to do. Um, they've had a second meeting where they're going to go up. Let's expand the lot that's up there. Um, I know I've, I've gone up there with, with the board before separately. Um, right now we can fit forty two cars in there, we should be able to fit, I believe, more than sixty two cars in there, but let's say sixty. Um.
The other thing is Ned brought up a point about, um, putting those little, I guess, the little parking bar thing. The center of that lot is never used, um, properly. It's because nobody knows how to use.
With that, I think that would be the, the putting of, uh. Painting of the lines, even though we, we don't need to have. Blacktop to paint lines.
Okay.
Once lines are established in there, I think then the people will be able to utilize the spots more. Um, that still doesn't mean I. Memorial Day I went through, I, there's many times I've gone through it and, you know, Fifth Street can have, I talked to Don, Fifth Street had cars on both sides the other day on a Tuesday. But the parking lot was empty.
Mm hmm.
You know, so that's not a parking problem, that's a parking utilization issue. Um. Some people just don't want to use it, um.
Well, with all due respect, um, the parking, we have a co- parking committee and committees refer ideas or notions to the board. And the committee is not supportive of that, so I don't.
And it was in, in the last meeting that I was there. The committee was not in favor of it. Mister Wyden did say, will you please just give it to the board? Um, and they have done that, the committee has brought it to the board, we are the board. Um, that's why I made a motion, that's why I asked for a second, so that we can vote on it. And then I think the town will know where we stand on wanting a parking study.
Okay. I, I second the notion that Ken's observation that, you know, Calicoon. Did a study and found and concluded what we. That, you know, we need to work on the parking.
He goes enough space, they just said it wasn't utilized.
Wasn't used. I mean, Memorial Day I did a little, you know, self audit while I'm walking the dogs. Even though the, the bank parking lot got a pretty full at some point, library parking lot essentially unused. And part of, I think, I hope for the parking committee to do more social media, more just education that literally. Walking from the top of the bank, bank parking lot, whatever you may call it. Or walking from the library parking lot, isn't that much more? You know, if people know how to do it. Or to do. Um, but I also want to say. I really want to have the whole conversation about parking to be respectful and about facts. And not about personalities or reading other people's minds or other people's motivation. Yeah, that's, it's too small, that's not fair, saying oh, so and so is doing this because of this. Now with, I've got made my conclusions about parking. I think I've made them know, but I don't want to cast a spurn.
Do what the parking committee suggests before we consider a survey.
Well, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor? Opposed?
Uh.
Bye. We'll wait for it to come back from the parking committee.
Right.
Uh, five point one four.
Uh, before, before we move on, just one other thing that. Ned, Ned made a very good point that. If something is not being. Held to, there is no consequence for that situation, right? So when you're talking, and as someone who lives on the flats, when there's parking on both sides of Fifth Street, that, that is a huge safety issue. That has no consequence until something happens. So I just, I really want to move that point to the forefront of the discussion because. As you say, oh, the municipal parking lots could be empty, but if there's no, if there's nothing preventing. People from moving in that direction. We have an issue.
Yeah, and I think the only way that you're going to prevent them. From utilizing that, that parking is to actually have an agency to come in, it can actually write the summonses for that, which would be your sheriff or your state police. Um. Knowing. What I know. Based on twenty years of experience. You don't want them coming into your, your areas and writing tickets to your local businesses that are trying to. Uh. Survive. So it really behooves maybe the business owners to assist them on where they should be so that it doesn't. Doesn't get to the point where somebody calls up, it's living on the flats and they're upset and they say, hey, I just tried to come home. And I can't. And then the next thing you know, you got a blue and gold car, a red and white car, and everybody's getting tickets for parking on pavement.
And I'm, I'm not suggesting it needs to go to the nth degree, but the discuss, it needs to be part of the discussion and we're talking about the parking committee.
But for the people to think that the town's got the ability to.
Exactly, we need to clarify the situation.
They, they don't have, you know, they don't have that, um, they can put whatever they want in their, their planning board minutes and stuff, but.
And ultimately before, before it's an inconvenience, it's a safety issue in my mind, so, especially as dark as that road is. At that time of night with people who have been out, so. Just wanted to make sure that point was part of the discussion. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion on it? Will we move? Um, an authorization to increase the mileage compensation, which is currently fifty eight, uh, and a half cents a mile. To the new rate which the feds are going to in July first, which will be sixty two and a half cents a mile. Um, entertain a motion or, uh.
I'll make that move.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Uh, five point one five, we need to amend the contract with Peter Manning. Um. To go from not to exceed forty seven hundred just to not to exceed fifty five sixty. And that is until, um.
One of the ones.
Yes, that would be to the end of August nineteenth of twenty two.
I'll make that.
Uh, eight nineteen of twenty two.
No, make that like eight later than that, because the, the grant is two in the twenties. What?
Contract is the contract before.
It's the contract before.
Yeah, I'm just trying.
This is not the last contract we did, we were over on that.
It's the previous contract.
Okay.
So I have a motion and I will make a second. All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed. Uh. Five point one six, uh, we heard from Neil, the Z B A. Chairperson regarding. An update of compensation.
So this is just the application.
Well, you've got two things.
Yeah, one is for, uh.
The second request is.
Does E B A application fees to two hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, and then the clerk.
Um. And then the other is for the, uh, the clerk and the board members, the clerk is at. Twenty five.
I thought we increased the clerks, the Z B A and planning clerk. No, no, we didn't.
We didn't.
Uh huh.
I just want a second, it was, I mean, I left the Z B A in either twenty thirteen or point twelve. And Amy was making twenty five dollars a day, so. It's been a long time.
I would think at this point, if we want to do something, I would, I would entertain the, uh, the application fee and the clerk fee. That's what I'm going to think. If we want to do the board members, let's discuss where we want to be with that, but that, they get paid at the end of the year, so it wouldn't be as a. We can still do it anytime between now and the end of the year, but I think like Neil said, the clerks need to be right.
That's a good idea. So I move that we increase the, um, Z B A zoning fee to two hundred and fifty dollars application fee. And the Z B A clerk. To fifty dollars per.
Z B A clerk and planning clerk or just.
Yeah, C B, C B A and planning. Thank you.
Application fee for both or application fee just for Z B A?
I'll just do the Z B A right now, I.
I don't know what the.
Yeah, we'll readdress. The planning board.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a motion on the floor, a second. I. You seconded it, all in favor?
I.
Opposed. Um. The other thing we do, I did get some. Votes on. Porta potty.
Hmm.
Um. You get broken down into a couple of things, I've got one from Reeves, um, I've got one from a porta potty and I got one from Langs. The problem that I have with two of the three is they do not offer a second cleaning if it's needed. Um.
What kind of quotes, how much are they?
The Reeves, pre-regular unit was one thirty a month. Plus a seventy five hour charge to place it. A twenty percent fuel charge and a, well, sales tax doesn't count.
Um, you say a unit is that one or two?
That's one.
This is just a porta potty?
That's just porta potty, that's a monthly charge.
And that's not eighty eight inches regular?
That's a regular.
But that includes the cleaning?
Once a week.
One, once a week.
Um. If the affordable, the unit was two hundred and seven dollars. And that was a once a week and it does not have. A secondary cleaner. Um. Langs was one fifty and then they did offer additional cleanings if it needed to be, um, they gave a. Quote on a regular and an A D, ADA unit. Um, they clean once a week, extra cleanings would be one fifty for the two units, so it would be seventy five. Per unit. Um, per extra cleaning charge. Um, both affordable and Reeves said they would not come back for a second charge, so.
And with the ADA port, port-a-lit, a different price?
The ADAs were two hundred. Two hundred and ninety seven and three hundred and seventy five.
In the same order?
Yes. Per month.
And we're, we're proposing or the thought is to do it from when to when?
Um, I asked for these from July one through September sixth. That's you through the fourth, the weekend of the fourth and your Labor Day weekend.
Well, I, I know, uh, how some people here feel, but I really think that, um. I think it's our responsibility as a board to think of the economy. I think it's our responsibility as a board to think of the economy and of the town and the, this is related to economy, but I also think that the chamber is responsible for, uh, some of this as well. And I think that we should partner with the chamber and have them pay part of this, whatever we decide to do.
I agree.
Are there legal problems with that? They can contribute to a fee that the town is paying. We're talking six hundred dollars for a season. And I know money's money and it's time to tell you that. It's gonna be an interesting experiment. See if they're used, see if they're abused, to see if uh, there's, there's resentment of them or people think, oh, this is a great town. You invite all these people from, you know, someone drives from. Westchester, you know, because they heard it's such a fabulous town. It's a magnet.
Yeah, but.
I'm saying.
The other thing is, I really think those porta potties are ugly and frankly, I don't like to use them. I would like to get something better. No, they have nice ones. They have really nice ones out there, not just those little tin can things.
I, I'm no fan, but July first is fifteen days away. I'm just saying, we can, I, I, and I would, I would say going long term, I'd love to have something like the other side of the show, of the, uh, Roble, Roble Bridge. It's, it's a nice permanent.
What, what about how many have at the pump house? What's that all about?
Air conditioned trailer.
Trailer. Oh, that's expensive.
Yeah, we don't want to get it. And, you know, unless we have a long-term plan, I think there could be a, you know, but I think we could do like with the chamber or whatever, even a a GoFundMe, like, yes, we can.
GoFundMe for.
Yeah, behind the bank, I think it would be a good place to. Yeah, so it's, it's discreet.
When you're talking about doing this, you're talking about a regular unit and an ADA unit? So we're gonna do a single ADA unit? You're gonna have events on Main Street.
Be probably a smart idea.
So probably one ADA and one.
Because here's where I'm going at is if we're going to do a single one and we do it as an ADA, then we could allow Jane to, you know. Do we approve this tonight? Do we say, do we approve contingent on getting the chamber to assist us?
Well, I would.
Or at least have a skin in the game. I don't.
I, I think we could approve it, uh, pending approval, um, chamber.
Same. Then in the past, we did use CJ's portables also. And they were, um, terrible and they definitely were cleaned.
Yeah, they didn't get back to me.
Oh, they didn't?
No.
Oh, then nevermind.
Yeah, and at once I got a machine and, and nobody got back to me. They got knocked off because if they need to be cleaned.
Yeah. The ADA, ADA unit, give me the prices.
Okay, the ADA unit out of Reeves was two hundred. They, they were relatively the cheapest one. Um, unfortunately, we would not be able to do extra cleanings in the area. We're gonna have some in the area more than once a week. Uh, affordable was two twenty-five for twenty-eight day and they don't have a second cleaning. Langs ADA was the most expensive at three seventy-five, but they would clean it as needed extra for a fee.
So it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, you're looking at, this one's gonna be more, but it's not gonna stink as long if you need it. Or if you're fine with the others, they're cheaper. But it might be a mess.
Yeah.
I think if you put one in, it should be clean.
I agree. I agree.
All the suspense, you know, you gotta do, what you gotta do to keep. What people are gonna do, I don't know that.
So it'd be if the, if the chamber.
Crystal.
Um, splits, it's about one eighty-five.
How about we?
Can I ask one other question? Uh, with it being at the back of the bank building, um, and after hours use, is there going to be some kind of motion detector light or something that?
Good question.
Thank you.
The street lights, we have the lights on the outside of the bank already.
You think that'd be sufficient?
Should be. No, it'll be not right behind the bank. That's why I think that's. So do we want to put this forth? There's a motion in the second and approve it and then see if the chamber will contribute. I, I think if we, I think if we wait. It's not gonna make it, so.
It's one eighty, eighty-seven fifty.
Which one do you want to go with?
I want the clean one.
I agree.
Okay, motion to contract with Lang and Byer Ventures for the utilization of a one ADA unit from July first through September the sixth.
At the rate of three hundred and seventy-five dollars per twenty-eight day billing cycle. Ending.
I don't know if we want to do it pending. How about we just do this as a board and see if the chamber will, let's throw the ball back in her court. I know that some people are gonna say, well, you've done it and now they don't want to do it.
But if it's on the books, um, as we approved it.
No, I said, we, we approve it and we ask.
Joni has her hand up.
I'm going to get, um, porta potties for the honeybee festival, um, at the end of September. So if you want to keep it to the end of September, the honeybee festival will give you two hundred dollars.
When's your honeybee festival?
Well, I was doing, during comments, September twenty-fourth.
And one ADA will be enough?
Yeah.
We'll amend that through the
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth of September.
That doesn't include any cleanings, any extra cleanings.
No, the extra cleanings would be at, uh, seventy-five dollars per cleaning. So you get one a month, but if you have a big book. One a week, I'm sorry.
But not with.
As many times as you want, it'll be seventy-five dollars.
All right. So what are you saying? You want to approve it without?
I'm looking, yeah, I think we should just make a motion.
And do it and then ask the chamber to pitch in.
And what if they say no?
Well, then we're, then we're here.
As part of the experiment, like I said.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll see what kind of buy-in we get with it.
Otherwise, we're gonna miss our July first entry level. And I think Jane can go to the chamber and.
Yeah, I've already spoken to the chamber.
And are they, they?
Oh, when you spoke to the chamber, you asked, you told the chamber that they, that they should take care of it. This is the, the town saying we're going to get them and we're willing to pay, but we'd ask like you to contribute.
I didn't get an answer from the chamber yet.
Okay, we'll see what they say. I have a motion.
Never know.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed?
I can abstain.
No good reason to.
Tell me how to vote.
I mean, that's true. It's really.
It's gonna hold it, eh, yeah?
Such a brat. It's still passed. Don't worry, I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining?
Yeah.
That's because she's gonna go work the chamber over.
Yeah, there's a lot of chamber members.
New businesses.
Crystal, don't you have an exciting announcement?
She's pregnant.
About the.
Oh, um, I got some of our web designer today and they are hoping that within a month, um, our new website will be up and running. Um, we are doing some website training in about two weeks. Um, so um, other than like minutes and agendas, minimal things will be added to the current website after this week. Only because they're starting to move everything over. So if you try to post anything that's kind of permanent, it's gonna get missed. But we are kind of excited.
From today on.
Uh, up to the end of this week. So like, I'm definitely, you know, things like our public notices, I can put that up. That's not a problem. But anything that's gonna be a permanent piece to go on there, um, it's gonna be kind of difficult to make sure that it gets moved over with everything else.
The T E C had a couple of pieces of feedback about the latest posting, um, that you can get that before the end of the week, I think, be more efficient along.
Which one?
Uh, some old information that could be taken down and.
It does, that already, get that already.
Great.
Where were you at six AM?
Boom. I was looking for a port-a-lit.
We're finishing.
I'm gonna open the floor to public comment, but I'm gonna open it up to Zoom first since they got cut off.
Brandy, go for it, Brandy. Yeah, I just wanted to, um, add a comment about the, um, Art Tech Memorial Garden. Um, you're approaching it as if it's, it's a parking lot, excuse me? What?
Is it a parking lot?
It, I mean, it's a parking lot issue, but it is really something you should keep in mind. It's the Art Tech Memorial Garden and, you know, we just made the Beth Tech one. I'd love you guys to kind of consider, how do we preserve that, uh, keep protect it? And maybe just plow towards the, uh, railroad rather than into his garden, because that was an issue clearly with the plow. So just please keep in mind, the family should be honored and Art gave a lot to this town, as did Beth, but I mean, to rip up plants, uh, I just think, please use your consideration, you know, for the family and the memory of this family.
Alicia, I think you. Where'd she go? She was just up there.
Alicia?
Yeah.
Alicia. No, she does not, maybe not want to talk.
Okay, is, do you have anybody else on Zoom before I open to the floor? No. Open to the floor? Yes, Brendan.
Thank you. A lot of people have spoken passionately about parking. I want to assure you, this, there's no personal vendetta. We, we have no axe to grind with any person in terms of what they've done, what they failed to do. This is a matter of, uh, us asking town questions about the town's enforcement, lack of enforcement or sometimes wishy-washy enforcement of town laws and New York state laws. We started the asking questions almost a year ago. It was July twenty twenty-one. We still really haven't gotten any satisfactory answers. And we're patient, but please don't try our patience, right? We're asking for equity. We're asking for fairness. We don't feel we've been treated fairly. And we're asking that the town do, do the right thing. You know, in, in terms of, there'd been a lot of talk about neighborly sharing parking and it's great. We, I'm on the parking committee. I'm all in favor of the low hanging fruit. Take the lot behind Wayne Bank, enlarge it, do whatever you can. Our argument has been, you don't have enough parking in the right places. And as the town continues to densify, you don't have the parking in the right places. And as we say, sometimes there's parking available, but people aren't utilizing.
Brendan, let me ask you this as a question. What is your suggestion right now with what you see as a problem that would make this better?
Start with your zoning law. Let me finish, please. Let me finish. You asked me a question. Your zoning law says that everybody provides parking on their property for the full occupancy of their building, however many hundred people that is, right? And that they've got to provide the parking and there is, if there's a waiver process, let me finish, you're not letting.
Question then, because you're not in a position to want to answer it in a civil manner.
I, I'll, I'll get there. I tell you, it's two-step thing. Enforce your code or don't enforce your.
When I ask you a simple question, I'm done with the answer.
Uh, if, if you, if you want to talk. You want to take us offline, we can take it offline and we can have a conversation about what I think you could do immediately. Remedially, not going to do it here now, but we can take it offline.
I just asked for the question here. Everybody's kind of interested in what you want. What is the end game that you want?
Let's, let's take that offline, right? No, it's, it's, it's the first, the town, why don't you ask the town, you answer the questions that the town has been at, has been asked and has an answer. Right? Start with that. Start with enforcing your zoning law and listen. Uh, Mr. McDonald, McDonald made an interesting proposal. Have nobody require parking. The town will provide public parking. It's an interesting proposal that should be studied. There are a lot of things that should be studied. That's why we recommended a study, that the town conduct the study intelligently. Listen, right now, you've got Rasmussen's not open. There are plans for that to open. Stratton Hens isn't open. You know, everybody says, oh, we got plenty of parking. Wait until everything's open. Wait until everything's running at its maximum. I think you're gonna have a problem. I think we're all gonna have a problem. All right. I have a problem when I've created a parking lot. And it's private property, my property for my tenants, right? And other people are parking, taking spaces away from my tenants. Of course I have a problem with that. Right? When other people have densified properties in town, it's affected other people. They haven't complained. I don't know why. But when, when my tenants can't use the parking that we've created for them, because other people are parking in it, it's a problem. When other people tell the planning board, they're gonna provide parking on their property and they don't provide it. They basically glide the planning board and lie to the town. And instead they park in my property, that creates a problem, right? Uh, because we're just looking for fairness, fairness for us, for our tenants, for what we're doing. We're a business. We're not a philanthropy. We're a business. We're here to run a business, right? I think we've contributed a lot to the town. We've been here for seven years investing in this town. Please, we'd like to continue to do that, right? So please employ fairness, right? And then enforce your laws. And if we're gonna change the laws, enforce it and change them in a way that benefits everybody. And, and I, I, I mean it. If you want to have a conversation, we'll have a conversation offline about where this could go. I would encourage everybody to, as I say, we've asked a lot of questions of the town. It's been directly with the town board. It's been with other, uh, county and state agencies. If, if you have questions, I would encourage you to foil the town. We have foil as the Freedom of Information Law. You can foil the town. You can get the facts together that we got. We, we, we haven't gotten answers, but we foiled. And with that, you can put a piece, piece together, a story. It's not very pretty of the town, not very pretty of what the town has done. Okay, so I, I encourage anybody, you want to know the truth? You can find it out yourself by foiling all the documents. That's it. We're just looking for fairness and we're looking to be able to run a profitable business. And we're looking for property rights to be enforced. Thank you.
Steve had a question before Steve.
I'm encouraged by the, um, discussion on the porta potties and I know people think this is a big joke, but it is really important. Jane, you mentioned something about, you know, you wouldn't want to use it if it wasn't clean. Well, if you'd rather go out and squat behind the, the post office and urinate there because you have access to a private toilet in your home. The people that are on Main Street, they don't have anything. So even, God forbid, a smelly toilet is better than not having anything when you have a three-year-old child crying because they can't find a bathroom for her to use or him to use. So I would like that to be taken with a little less flippancy. I was very happy to see that it was discussed more or less in depth. I had one question. There was, uh, of the three options of that, who made offers of having the porta potties on Main Street, um, there was another company that was proposed. And I, I didn't know, I didn't see that name on those three. Uh, I believe Brandy Marola gave it to.
That's one of the ones that I called and they do not.
Reeves, I believe.
No, Reeves, we had, we had a quote from.
No, 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 not the one that Brandy gave in.
Oh, okay.
Um, you do realize we just passed this and then we are putting the porta potty.
I understand. I understand. I'm just saying.
The way we did it.
This is important and I don't think that it should be made light of. It is a very big step forward. And the next thing will be the wifi on Main Street. So we get into the twenty-first century. Thank you.
Steve.
I find the whole parking situation confusing at times because I analyze the town and I say we need more spots. Yet we have eight hundred girls coming here on motorcycles and it works. We have Ruafest, it works. We have Honeybee Fest, it works. And somehow or another, it just seems to work out. And I think that things are okay. They just need a little bit of improvement. It's bad the way it is now. And I think sometimes I get annoyed. I see, you know, some of the store owners park on Main Street, but yet there's enough parking for everybody. Just everything always just seems to work out and everybody's happy coming to this town. And I just think that it looks ugly for the town, that a man invested a lot in the business and it's not open. And people are gonna come to this town again this year and say that place is not open. I think something needs to be done. It looks bad for the town. That's it.
You. Just wanted to say thanks for your action.
You're welcome.
Nico. Michael, you're next.
I just wanted to say that I am happy to offer my services for free for the Art Pack. Um and or rather the, yeah, the Art Pack. Uh railing that needs to be fixed. Yes, uh it's in disrepair as we all know and uh. The only thing I can offer is buying the steel, but I can uh certainly do the work. So I am. I just, it's a shame that it's uh hasn't been fixed for so long.
Yeah, just to clarify so that the people on Zoom and the in the audience that may not be aware of it, it's more than a railing that's not being fixed. It actually has to be excavated out and new wall put in.
I saw that to the concrete.
It's not a, it's not a. Not a simple job.
It's correct. The concrete is not uh it it's part of it, but if you incorporate, you know, the steel that's there already needs to be torn out. The concrete needs to be poured and you can incorporate while you're pouring the steel and I can.
Trying to do the job from the back end of it so that we're not interfering with the garden.
Yep, that's all. Thanks.
There is a. Meccular issue and it has nothing to do with parking and I realize it's a complex issue because there's many agencies involved. Uh but we have arrived at the point now where we really do need a traffic light at the intersection of Bridge and Main. And I see it every morning from the Tustin Cup because there's traffic that comes over that bridge at forty fifty miles an hour and does not even pause. They just barrel right on up Bridge Street. That's an early morning issue. Later in the day, when you get into, especially on the weekend, there's always massive confusion at that intersection. Nobody understands right of way. Nobody knows if the traffic coming off the bridge, where it should go, somebody trying to turn left onto Main. People are sitting there honking at each other, staring at each other, tying up everything because there's simply no concept of where they're supposed to go and when they're supposed to do it. A traffic light, I realize, would be involved many agencies because obviously you're dealing with the bridge, you're dealing with a town road, your town street. Uh county road, all of these factors come into play, but I think things would move a lot smoother through town and a lot safer if we had a traffic light at that intersection.
It's interesting.
To traffic light town, Johnny. Joe.
Right time, um but I would like to ask permission for the honeybee festival uh for September twenty-fourth. It's from um eleven to five. Um we're going to do as usual, close from Bridge Street to the post office, leaving the parking lot available. We'll have the, we will be having the Waltpot Band again this year on the deck, which is great. And um we still need more vendors, so anyone's listening, we need more vendors.
Fourth from eleven to five?
Saturday, yeah.
Okay, I move that uh we approve uh. Uh closure, right?
You want the road closure.
Road closure on September twenty-fourth for the honeybee festival from eleven to five.
From Bridge to the, starting at eleven.
Closing about nine, nine o'clock, nine thirty. And then till five thirty-six, just a big. And I'll inform the ambulance and the police and uh all the usual suspects. Um there's also, alright, go ahead.
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I.
I opposed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um there's another festival this weekend. I don't know if we are, if the town's aware of it. It's happening somewhere in Narrowsburg. We don't know where. It's called this uh Sabah or Sababa? Sababa. It's a festival with a lot in Narrowsburg. They do not disclose the location unless you purchase a ticket. Tickets are a hundred and fifty, two fifty and three fifty. It's a a religious, it's a, what is it? It's an orthodox uh music fair, music festival. And I didn't know anything about it and I thought the town, if the town knew about it, because we have another festival going on right now, I thought two festivals at the same time could be a problem. Um I have the website. Did you, are you aware of it? Did they ask permission for it or?
I don't know anything about it.
Interesting, because it's not, yeah, I didn't know about it either. It's called the S A B A B A Music Festival. I did see, um uh I'm not sure if this is where it is. Uh there's a home on ninety-seven, the white one with the pool in inside. They're putting tents up out there. Birthday party? Okay, I wasn't sure. If it's at Landers, I'm not sure, but it seems like there's a lot of people will be coming and I don't think with everything going on this weekend, I don't know. That's look into that. Come on now. Can't have all the fun here. If you look up the website, it's all the information there.
The other public comment from the floor before I move to the comments.
Um I do have one comment online.
Okay.
Uh from Wanda. She was concerned about the uh that weed down my little Erie. I did mention to her that the highway department there, mowers are broken right now. She said that needs to be um done by like a person, not just a mower.
I think it's been, I.
Someone there with the side.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know, but they did all the, he said somebody. Yeah, I mean, they they cut the the weeds, you know, up above the bench and keeping people from going down to the little stairs.
Wanda, I admitted you.
I I say, thanks. Um, yeah, I'm just trying to keep up on keeping it down as as a matter of fact.
Sounds like a song.
Yeah, right? It grows pretty fast. My other question was about the stone wall that we're putting in on the south side of town by the welcome sign.
I got your message, Wanda. I didn't understand it, so go ahead.
Uh there's just two things. Um we have to level the ground and I was hoping I might be able to get one of the town uh guys to help us level the ground. It doesn't look like it's gonna be a big project. I was down there with Debbie today. So I was wondering if I could ask one of the guys to help us level it. And the other thing is we're gonna try to put the stone like on the ninety-seven side where the wall's gonna be created. The stone should be gone within a week. We just thought that positioning would be a better place to put the stone for us to create the wall, if you understand.
But it still will be with uh more than twenty-five feet from the center line?
The stone wall will be thirty feet away from the center line. The placement of the stone for us to build the wall. Might be within the twenty-five feet, just asking to say that this is what we're thinking about doing and that's okay. Knowing that the stone wall is gonna be built as soon as we get the stone delivered.
Wanda, whereabouts is this? Is this?
It's it's right at the V.
The V, yeah. It'll definitely, wherever you put the stone, it'll have to stay out of there right away.
Oh, yeah.
That's a, yeah, that's a county.
I'm gonna be on the grass. I'll be on the. And actually the gully, really.
Oh, you mean just to place it before it's built? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
Just letting you guys know what we're planning.
Well, it's out of that twenty-five feet, it's kind of around the twenty-five feet.
So it has to be with out of the twenty-five feet, then the same. Okay.
Okay.
How long will that be there, Wanda?
She said.
Debbie thinks the wall can be done within a week, so. Really shouldn't be there that long at all.
Okay.
Okay.
We're coming.
Thanks, Wanda.
Can I get a highway guy to help us straighten the the ground?
Yes, if you want me to call, I'll call, but I think that um if you just could speak to Don in the morning, he'll he'll arrange.
Excellent. Okay, I'll give him a call tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you for everything you do. Have a good evening.
You too.
For comment.
I just think people need to remember and we're gonna have open hearing that there is provision in the change to the zoning law and then. General law number one to the to allow the the planning board to waive parking required. It's not perfect. I would like to go further philosophically, but it's moving in the right direction. I take hold of positive proof in that direction. To 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 uh. Make something more perfect that may not have.
Public comment's over.
I really think that that. And you can all say that.
Any other public comment meeting reminder that our. Uh public hearing will be on the fifth of July at six thirty PM for the purpose of local law number one.
Sixth of July, fifth, fourth of July.
Fifth of July is our.
I know, but I'm just, I'm on board comment.
Oh. I wasn't, I was just correcting you on your board comment.
Okay, please remember fourth of July parade, chicken barbecue and festival.
It's gonna be wonderful. And we're also still looking for a few more vendors and sponsors.
Okay.
Let's.
So.
Checking.